All right, I will be calling the meeting to order from the Village of Cross Plains Board of Trustees, July 27th, 2020. Roll call, please.
President Langfeld.
Here.
Trustee Francois.
Here.
Trustee Xander.
Here.
Trustee Palmakowski.
Here.
Trustee Pousias.
Here.
Trustee Kettabolder.
Here.
And I see that trustee Broceus.
Here.
Here.
Alrighty, so let's stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to welcome Dane County Executive Joel Parisi. You'll have some opening remarks and then a little time for questions.
Hi, thank you very much. I appreciate you taking the time and rescheduling for my last scheduled meeting to be able to, I'm sorry, I'm looking around at my computer, my screen keeps on changing on me. Okay, well, I'm just gonna go ahead there. I'll just talk about that. Thank you. I appreciate you allowing me to come and chat with you a little bit. I originally thought it would be helpful if I just stopped by to give you an update on some of the county's initiatives and kind of where we're at today. I won't take too long on what we've done within the past because you're probably all fairly familiar. We were fortunate enough to receive a CARES funding allocation. And with those dollars, we have done a number of things focusing on basic needs. One of the initial programs we began and that we've actually extended, that we started out with a $3 million grant and we've extended it to $6 million now to get us through at least October, is a partnership with Second Harvest Food Bank and our local farmers and growers. One of the things that we saw happening, you know, fairly immediately once COVID came and we had to shut down the economy, it was an incredible uptick in the need for food. And we wanted to be able to help out from the county side. And we wanted to do it in a way that was more than just purchasing food. As important as that piece of it is, we wanted to do everything we could to purchase locally and to include our farmers and our growers. Because those folks are getting hit at the same time as everyone else does, as you know, with supply chain issues and customers who they did sell to, you know, kind of disappearing during COVID. And so we were able to put together a partnership through which the majority of the food stuffs being purchased with the Dane County dollars are coming from our local growers. We were able to build those bridges with our farmers and growers. In addition to making the connections, we also leased a number of refrigerated semi-trailers that so we can store more of the local meat and dairy products and the produce now as it's coming online. So that program has been incredibly successful. And unfortunately, the need has certainly skyrocketed. So we have our eyes on that. Like I said, we've extended it through October and will potentially go longer if the need still exists. Another thing that we saw, you know, right away, and it's, you know, no surprise to anyone, is that many of our local businesses, especially the smaller businesses, were hurting right away. And so we wanted to look and see what we could do to pitch in and help them, if not thrive, because not many folks are thriving right now, at least survive the worst of the pandemic so that when we get to the recovery stage, they'll still exist. So initially, we threw in some county dollars that we had available, about $800,000, into a grant program. We partnered with an organization called Dane by Local, and they're administering the grant program. It soon became evident that that $800,000, while helpful, was just a drop in the bucket compared to the need. So once we received our Federal CARES Act allocation, we dedicated an additional $10 million to that fund. And it's been a very huge success. I was on the Zoom this morning with a number of the small businesses associated with Dane by Local, many of whom have received grants. And they reported that, you know, there are a number of businesses who, while they're still hurting, have said that those grants have been crucial and critical to their being able to survive to this point. Now, we're at a point, I'm gonna look real quickly here on my computer, just to let you know. I do have, you know, for example, there are a few Cross Plains area businesses that have received some of those grants. Amy Health Photography, McGinnis Tool, Switzer Company, Endress Insurance, and a few others. And again, while those folks are still facing some challenging times, you know, hopefully those grants were of service. And we're really pushing to get more federal dollars to be able to do more of that kind of work. Right now, as you may be reading in the news, CARES Act number, version three is up for debate. The Senate has introduced a version and the Congress has introduced a version. They're fairly far apart, but there are good things, you know, in each of them. So hopefully they can find a good compromise. For the small businesses, there is more money in for the PPE loans for the businesses. We're strongly urging that a piece of the House version be adopted because that includes more dollars for local governments, state and local governments. Right now, I don't believe the Senate version has that in there. And that's really what's made it possible for us to do what we've done as far as helping to feed people, our small business grant program. We have a $10 million eviction prevention grant that we've spent most of the money. Just, you know, folks can't make their rent if they don't have a job. And so, you know, preventing people from losing their homes and apartments and keeping people from being homeless until we get through this is a huge concern. So my office, we have a legislative liaison who works with the federal government and the state government. And she's working, you know, daily with our congressional delegation to make sure that they know, you know, what we need. And I've been, I held a press conference last week just to highlight some of this, just to put it on people's radar screens, you know, because sometimes you hear, you know, this money is coming or there's money here, they're debating on the federal level. But we want to make sure people know about the real world impact of those dollars and how that's going to help us get through this. I think I'll just touch briefly on the latest guidelines from Public Health Madison Dane County. And then I'd be happy to open it up for any questions or anything you guys want to put on my radar screen. As you know, unfortunately, we had to dial back our guidelines. Once we started trying to open, we started hitting over 100 positive cases per day. And things were getting, you know, getting into a dangerous place, as we see happening, you know, around much of the state and unfortunately around a lot of the nation. So we had to dial back to guidelines that are similar to our phase one that we initially started with, mostly focusing at the size of gatherings and bars. Because it was in doing the contact tracing, when someone tests positive, we have contact tracers who talk to them to find out where they've been so we can let other people know they may have been exposed. And a very high percentage of those people had either been to a bar or a large gathering. A lot of those folks were younger. We're seeing an increase in cases among younger people. But there were folks that were, you know, my age category too, that were older. And so those guidelines are in place for a while. It's gonna, it's gonna take a while to get back to the metrics that we need to hit in order to safely loosen those at all. And as I'm sure you're aware of now, a couple of weeks ago, we also put in place a mandatory indoor masking policy. We were the first county in the state to do that. And we kind of started off, there's been a domino effect. A lot of other localities have put those into place right now. And I'm hoping that the state will do it. It's, you know, it's, I know it's, for some reason, a controversial issue. But it's, you know, it's not a big lift, you know, from where I sit, to wear a mask for the benefit that we get from it. As the science evolves on the masks, and I think this is why there's some hesitation from some folks, because as you recall, a few months ago, when this first started and we didn't know a lot about COVID, the initial guidance was a mask doesn't make any difference. But the science, since that has happened, as it's been studied over the last couple of months, has shed light on the effectiveness of masks, not only to stop me, if I have it, from infecting you, but it also, they're also shown now to help the person wearing the mask. And there's, there's one study that CNN cited that said if 80% of the people wore a mask, just that alone could reduce the spread of COVID by 60 to 70%. So if we can get folks wearing masks inside and still focus on social distancing and hand washing, we actually do have the tools to control this. We'll see how things unfold. Where, you know, I'm concerned about this fall and winter because we still have a number of months, you know, knock on wood, that it is only months of COVID to deal with. You know, hopefully comes springtime, things will start looking up as far as the vaccine, et cetera. But we really need to buckle down and watch out for one another and help folks get through. And again, with the realization that these guidelines, while they are incredibly important for public health, they do have some, you know, real life impacts on people's lives and on our economy. And so that's why, again, we're continuing to focus on lobbying the federal government to try to ensure that we can get more dollars in here to help people through the most difficult period of the COVID experience. So I think I'll stop there and I'm happy to take any questions or listen to any concerns anyone has. Happy to answer anything. I know off the top of my head. And if not, we can certainly get back to folks with an email with the information.
Joel, this is Jay Langfeld. I want to thank you for taking the time to come attend our meeting. And I guess the only feedback I would give you is I certainly agree with the focus on wearing masks and social distancing, washing hands in capacity levels, where I think the county could make some improvements is reducing or eliminating some of the other smaller things that, in my opinion, are probably have a very small benefit. And I'll give you an example. Friday, I went to get my haircut. There were a couple of people ahead of me. I sat in a chair. We were social distanced properly. When I got up for my turn to get my haircut, I wanted to put my hat and glasses on the chair that I had been sitting on. And the barber told me that's against county rules that you can't place personal items somewhere else. You have to hang on to them. So, and I'm just thinking, well, the chair's already been contaminated with me. So it's those smaller things that I think some people get upset about. And then it kind of overshadows the more important, the more beneficial ones. So I'd ask the health department to really take a good look at those and maybe trim down some of the lower benefit ones for people.
Sure, I'm happy to share that example with you, Jay.
Anybody else would like to? Bill?
This is Bill Broceus. Thanks for joining our meeting. I do have a quick question for you. So when does this, when does this end? You know, because there's still a lot of businesses that are struggling, as you mentioned earlier. And I know they would prefer to get back to work than to take government money. So, well, when does this, when does this really end for everybody?
Yeah, no, that's a really, that's a really good point. You know, it's, for us, it's finding that balance. Because it ends when we get the virus under control. And, you know, you know, in hindsight, we know now that everyone would have been better had we just shut everything down solid for three to four weeks and then gradually come back and all had masks. Unfortunately, you know, again, we're learning as we go. But, you know, the best answer I can give to that is that it's, that we don't, is that we don't know. But what we do know is the better job we can do controlling the virus and suppressing it again and getting those numbers down and getting people to abide by the guidelines that are in existence. And frankly, you know, persuading, you know, our neighboring counties in the state to get some guidelines in place, the faster we'll be there. Because the best thing for the economy is to be able, is the same thing as what's best for our health. And that's to get the spread of the virus down low enough and getting everyone practicing these safe practices so that we can get back out there and move around more. So, I mean, unfortunately, it's basically the answer is when we get to back down to certain metrics, then we can look at the other phases. But, you know, we got so far off the charts a few weeks ago with the number of cases that it's going to take us a while to get back down. And I'm sorry, there's not a more definitive answer. But, you know, the virus right now is in control.
So just, just to follow up with that. So you have, you said, you know, we're seeing 100 cases a day, right? I mean, that's, that was the kind of the cause of that?
Yeah.
So how many, from, so from, I mean, obviously, we're testing more. I mean, that's, I mean, that's the big thing is, is we are testing more. So you're expected to see more cases. But from that, how many hospitalizations are we seeing? And how many deaths are we seeing in the state compared to where we were, let's say, in April or May?
Yeah, I don't have that number off the top of my head. But the, I can tell you generally what they look at is the numbers, but it's also the percentages. So if you have more cases, or excuse me, if you have more testing, odds are you're going to find more positives. But you'll also get a more realistic picture of the percentage of the population that's testing positive. And so what we have to look at is there are a couple of, there are some capacity issues there. As far as the number of cases, can we keep up with contacting all of those folks, finding out everyone they've been in contact, and contacting all of those folks and making sure they get the information and the quarantine information they know? So we've been constantly, the health department, adding positions to that. The other piece is what you mentioned, it's the hospital capacity. And that's where it gets a little challenging because we don't, Dane County certainly impacts, you know, greatly, the number, the capacity of our hospitals. We contribute to that capacity. But because in particular of UW hospitals, they are regional and like in a region that goes out and reaches into other states too. They have a feeder system. So we can control a certain amount of that, but we depend on, you know, the folks around us. When they have no guidelines and they're feeding into that, that makes it a little more challenging to us. So the balance that we have to strike is, you know, how many cases do we have? And exactly what you mentioned, and like I said, I apologize, I don't have the number off the top of my head. How is our hospital capacity looking? Because the last thing we want to do, obviously, is be in a place where ICU beds are filling up. And, you know, we don't really want to wait until we're at that point to have guidelines in place to keep us from being in that point. I think early on, we were somewhat victims of our own success because we did have guidelines in place, we were doing very well. And, you know, it's kind of, they tell you if you're taking antibiotics, make sure you keep taking them after you start feeling better. But we didn't keep taking our antibiotics. I mean, people started getting a little more relaxed, you know, in their personal lives and gathering more and seeing other people. We opened up, people crowded into bars, didn't necessarily practice social distancing, and that landed us where we are today. But what I can tell you is those are the types of things that public health looks at. They're tracing infrastructure and the hospital capacity. And they do have a dashboard that has that information on it daily too. At the Public Health Madison Dane County, we can send you a link to that if you don't have it. It's a pretty good dashboard that shows you how things are going from day to day.
That's through Dane County Health?
Yeah, and Scott could send, could send you guys a link to that. It's a really good dashboard. It has a lot of, not only the number of cases and positives reported daily, but it has a lot of demographic information and hospitalizations and those types.
That'd be great, too.
Yeah.
All right, I have Lori and then we'll move on.
Hi, this is Lori. I had read that 17,000 negative cases were not reported or calculated in the last reporting. And I'm just wondering how efficient is the system working?
Yeah, they're caught up now and that shouldn't happen again. But they were, you know, basically overloaded. We went from having, you know, five to 800 people come for testing per day to, you know, upwards of 3,000 coming per day. So it's been kind of a, you know, building the plane while you're flying it kind of operation. And they're, they got through that, I believe it was the end of last week. And they're caught up now. They have a system in place where I've been told, when I've asked, that that shouldn't happen anymore.
Tara Morris from the Chamber of Commerce has a question, whether or not you're gonna allow that.
I'd rather just keep it here because we gotta move on, otherwise we'll... You know, I really appreciate you stopping by and taking the time to talk with us and thank your staff for all the work they've done too. Because I think you have been keeping people informed.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate your time. And if any folks who aren't on this call or don't have the ability to ask me a question right now have any questions, feel free to shoot me an email at parisi@countyofdane.com and I'll be happy to get back to you.
Thank you, Joel.
Thanks, guys. Take care.
All right, we're at public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board on any issue. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. While the village board encourages input from residents, it may not discuss or act on any issue that is not duly noticed on the agenda.
We did have a pre-registration from Casey Fitz Randolph in regards to while number three, but I do not see that he is with us. He's not back there, so.
He might come on a little later then. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. Upon request of any trustee, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration under general business. Does anybody want anything removed from the consent agenda? All right, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second, I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. All right, reports. I just have two short items. One, I checked the census, we're at 79.7%. I'll probably put this on August agenda. We'll see what the numbers are, but I'd like to make a final push to try to get that up into the 90s. I, you know, right now, we're basically at a B.C., so I'd like to get us up to at least an A.B. The other is, as you know, a week, a little, almost two weeks ago, the chief and I met with Middleton Police and the school district, talking about the SROs. The superintendent had put together a pretty good timeline. Basically, there's going to be an evaluation of the positions that'll include review of the current roles and responsibilities, literature review, data analysis, stakeholder survey, focus groups, alternative models or potential changes to the current models, principal report, and then supervision, evaluation, and training of SROs. So that's all going to be talked about, finished up. And they'll want to have a decision by January to decide if they want to continue with the program in the 2021, 2022 school year. Now, what kind of threw a little bit of a wrench in this whole thing is, if you aren't aware of it, Middleton Common Council, when it first came up, it was a 4-4 vote and the mayor voted no, so it did not pass. It was brought up a second time at their next meeting and it passed with the condition that they weren't going to sign until the evaluation was done.
What passed?
That the agreement was conditioned on the evaluation.
Okay.
So they have to have an evaluation. So this has to be done. So I have not received any notice of a change. Currently, there's the meet, the groups that I would be involved in, the leadership part of this. We had, we have two meetings set in September and one in October. So I don't know if that'll be moved up. I don't think there's as much of a rush, considering school is not going to be in session. So there wouldn't be SROs anyways. But if they do decide to open up the schools prior to this evaluation being done, we would clearly have an SRO in our middle school. And right as this, as we speak now, Middleton High School and Cromley would not. So we'll have to just kind of wait and see what happens on that. For us, it's not going to really have an impact on the budget one way or the other unless we choose to reduce our police department staff. So, but I don't want to get into that, but that's kind of where we are right now. So we're kind of at a wait and see. For us, it'll be something we will have to consider when we talk about the 2021 operating budget. All right, that's all I have.
Just a reminder that the Saturday, Friday and Saturday is Spike Rep and it's still happening, a little bit different. They're doing bags and volleyball rotation tournament as scheduled. So it won't be like, everybody will be there all at one time. They're really watching the social distance and the mask. They are going to have silent auctions inside the Legion. They only allow 10 to 10 people in at a time. They're going to watch the front door and the back door. They have canceled the ban for Saturday night. And all the food things, but they still have raffle tickets and T-shirts and glasses if anybody wants to buy some. And then the only other thing is, is that the blood drive is still happening at St. Francis. The two days are Monday, August 3rd, and Thursday, September 10th.
All right, thank you very much. We'll go to other trustees' reports. Bill?
Just a quick update from the library. We had our library board meeting last week. And it, the good news is we're not, we passed our tentative budget for the 2021 year, or 2021 fiscal year. And we're looking at a, based on your guidance, a 1% increase total on the budget and no new capital for 2021. So that's a good thing. The second thing real quick is, Bill, if you update the agenda, could you just make a revision too? Because I had a bunch of notes in here.
Okay.
And as soon as you put a new one in there, overwrote everything I did.
All right, thank you.
Nothing overwrote, no worries.
All right, Michael?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the Sustainability Committee is processing the survey that it conducted in April and will be presenting a report to the village board at the August meeting next month.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll be at the village administrator slash clerk report. Bill?
Hey, thank you. Just another reminder, this will be continuing until the election that the library has now, the polling place. Here. I got an update on here. I gotta do something quickly here to make sure that our meeting doesn't end.
Yes, that's permanent.
Sorry about this.
If you use three, one to do that.
This wasn't, I think this was done by the school district. Oh, really? Yeah, we do have, we do have a license. Can everyone hear me? I just want to make an announcement here. We do have a license here. It has given me a notice that the time remaining on the meeting is about six minutes. So if we do get booted, we'll stop conversation, we'll log back in. We should be good to go. I apologize about that. So in regards to, regards to... regards to my update, first of all, again, the library is the polling place, and that is indefinitely until we find another permanent location. Can everyone hear me? It sounds, it looks like someone's having issues hearing me.
I can.
Okay, thank you. And then, just the joint review board met on June twenty-third to approve the annual report for Tiff number three, our tax increment district number three. It does show that in twenty-nineteen, there was an increment value of thirty-four million, three hundred sixty-three thousand, eight hundred from the base value in twenty-thirteen. The annual tax increment is seven-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-eight. I think that the important thing is that in twenty-twenty-five, the tax increment district will pull or turn a positive cash flow. I do have the report, so if you do want to see it, feel free to request for it. We'll also work on getting that to the website. The steering committee for the Carp Sea or Capital Regional, Capital Area Regional Planning Commission met in regards to green and their green infrastructure program. That does include the villages across Plains, town across Plains, Village Mesa Maney and Black Earths. Dane County Emergency Management, Dane County Land and Water, you know, it's Army Corps. And what we're working on is green infrastructure along the Black Earth Creek corridor. And so the group is very excited, working on green infrastructure, flooding, flood mitigation. More to come on that as we dive down deeper. Upgrade from the Dane, from the Dane County Cities and Villages Association Membership Meeting. They are the lobby group that represents Dane County Villages and Cities. And they're in plan in regards, they are tracking what's happening at the state level in regards to budget, budget and share revenue and transportation aid. From what we hear from them, isn't that twenty-twenty-one seems to be okay? But in twenty-twenty, at the state level, they're looking to potentially cut from the budget. So, and that means potentially the shared, share revenue could be in jeopardy and just something to watch out for. There's no official word yet. They are also looking for an elected official to represent the membership at the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission, I believe. D V C C A has three seats on that commission, and so if you are interested, let me know and I can pass your name on. And then lastly, in regards to Glacial Valley Playground, we went ahead and ordered the playground equipment after speaking with the vendor. They do have a ten-week leak time on that, so that's putting us into September, October to construct. I know that Michael was planning, had planned on doing a community build, you know, and if COVID nineteen continues to go on, that will be a staff build. That's it for me.
All right, other reports, I have police chief.
Hey, it looks like I'm on a timer for two minutes, so. My wife would love that timer. Good evening. So first of all, I just want to thank everyone. I've, I've completed my six months here, and I do want to thank all of you for your support as I fully transitioned to this very important position. I've been asked multiple times what's been the hardest part, and obviously, there's been a lot of things going on within our community and our state. But for me, the hardest part has been just getting to meet the community without having contact with them. And so I've capitalized on all the opportunities I've been given, and which includes changing my schedule around and doing everything I can to do that. Right now, I'm still, we're, we're working quite a bit on our policies and standard operation procedures, and I'll be doing those kind of things throughout these next six months. Obviously, keeping in mind the best practices based on Twenty-First Century policing concepts and, and the eight can't wait standards and those kind of things. Report about staff, everyone is healthy and, and I continue to build relationships with everyone, obviously focused on a strong foundation of trust and respect. So we're still working through some things, and, and they're getting to know me and I'm getting to know them. And so we're still kind of working through, through some things and different protocols that they weren't used to and different things that I wasn't used to. And then just quickly, our department right now, we have handled over twelve-hundred cases already, anywhere from a vehicle lockout to a sexual assault investigation. So in the first six months, we've, we've been very, very busy. So that's just kind of a little, just quick report and.
Okay, we'll get restarted again. Again, I apologize for the inconvenience. Chief, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not sure where, where exactly I got cut off, but I'm thinking it was probably at the department. So we've handled about twelve-hundred, over twelve-hundred cases, anywhere from vehicle lockouts to a sexual assault. So we've been extremely busy the last six months on top of everything else that's been going on. But everything's going well. I just wanted to give just a real quick, three-minute report so that people know what, what we're kind of doing. And I plan on doing this yearly. So I just thought, being it's my first year and, and just so I can get used to the systems and the processes everyone's taking. But if anybody has questions, otherwise, that's it.
All right, does anybody have any questions? I guess we don't have any. Chief, thank you very much. All right, we'll go.
Thank you.
Tara, Tara's next.
Hi, Tara, go ahead.
Hi. I know I've given you guys a few updates over the last few months. One of the big things that I'm kind of focusing on is keeping my hours kind of to that part-time, just because of funds primarily. But I have, if you have additional questions, I'm just kind of going to do a slight overview of what's been going on since March. As you know, we, because of COVID, we, everything kind of got shifted. We had already done a revamping of our membership, but between March and May, we supported everybody within the Cross Plains community, regardless of membership status, and did not push for renewals at that point, and started pushing our drive in May. On some positive notes, our interactions with the community has been super positive. Our social media presence has grown exponentially on both Facebook and our Instagram is still about a hundred and sixty people, but over the last couple of months, that's where it's taken us, which has been really good. We have over sixteen-hundred daily impressions on Instagram, and we have a reach of over fourteen thousand people daily on Facebook. So that's been super positive. We started a YouTube channel, but that's primarily just to hold our videos. I'm not really looking for engagement there. Our newsletters, we still have our weekly Monday newsletter, Crossing Paths, but I have also added To The Point, which is a member-only newsletter with things specific to our members. And our open rate on our emails, which I think that's more important than how many emails are going out, is thirty-two percent, and that's fourteen percent higher than my industry average. So thirty-two percent doesn't sound a lot, like a lot, at least not to me, but when I look at it overall, we're ahead of the game. I've also been promoting, obviously, emergency orders, village board meetings, been supporting people, excuse me, businesses by writing letters of support when they're applying for grants and so forth. And I've been doing that for businesses that are also not members of the chamber. That being said, on more of a negative note, our membership is way down, more than fifty percent down over last year. We only have fifty-six members currently. We've taken a different approach this year than in the past. In the past, we have invoiced everybody. That's pretty much been on our list, and then supported everyone and tried to ask and ask and ask for payment. This year, I have asked that people sign up, and those are the businesses and organizations that we are supporting. Unfortunately, the businesses that we supported between March and May, many of those businesses did not want to turn around and become paid members. So at my next board meeting, which is August sixth, I believe it is next Thursday, one of my key points is going to be looking at the sustainability of the chamber. It seems as though the community wants it. I'm not sure from a business standpoint, really what the best fit is there, because as a paid organization, I don't know if, where we really stand. So that's something we're looking at. We have our golf outing coming up September eighteenth, which is in Sauk County, still masks, but we don't have, at this point, at least the same restrictions, and we're moving ahead with our golf outing, unfortunately. Looking at some of the fundraisers that have happened around our community that are raising twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars, we have yet to raise even five thousand at this point. We have ten business sponsors, and half of those are only at the twenty-five-dollar sponsorship level, and we have forty golfers, and that is a joint partnership with Northwest Dane Senior Services. So that's kind of an overall standing on where we're at.
I got a question for you. The reduction in businesses, is it part of the reason that the business doesn't exist anymore? Or they just have chose? Okay, and then I guess the other suggestion, you might talk about the board. It seems like you're doing a lot of work for businesses that are not members. Maybe you.
Not as of right now, during the March-May period.
Okay, well, I guess in the future, what I would do is, because it sounds like there'll be more grant money coming out, maybe you can charge businesses that are not members a dollar amount, and people who are members get it for free, just bring in some revenue. Just a couple suggestions.
Yep. Yeah, and I, really, the support was just March through May. We didn't, as a board, they decided, and I agreed with, holding off on asking people to sign up, and we did a little bit more revamp and making sure that we had value added since we weren't being able to do things in person. But we also, not having Memorial Day, that was potentially usually raised around seven to nine thousand dollars, and that was a huge hit for us.
Anybody else? All righty, well, thank you very much, and good luck in the future.
Thanks.
All right, general business. Number one, approve of resolution number eight dash twenty-twenty, recognizing Capital Off-Road Pathfinders for the implementation and creation of the Driftless Stones Mixed-Use Mountain Biking Trail in Cross Plains. I'm turning it over to Judy for this.
I have two awards that we are thanking you for all your hard search, pick and appreciation, and we're thanking both of you for all your hard work for this. I appreciate your great things about it, and thank you so much. You brought people in, and everybody likes it. I go walking, I can see people going up that hill all the time, so thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Yeah, Ron could be here.
Would you be able to get the certificate to him?
Yep, I can get it over on.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Yeah, no, I definitely agree. I think it's been a success for sure, a lot of people. I think especially this time, when there's a lot of stuff going on and shows the importance of that in our open spaces and that kind of thing. So yeah, we really appreciate the opportunity.
And the whole village appreciates it, fits right in. All right, number two, discussion.
Is that a, do we need to approve that, or it's been approved?
Yeah, it's a resolution.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I thought it was just a, you know, the certificates, but go ahead. Do I have a motion to accept resolution number zero-eight twenty-twenty?
I move to approve resolution zero-eight twenty-twenty.
Do I have a second? All right, I have a motion in a second to approve resolution number zero-eight dash twenty-twenty. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, same. All right. Number two, discussion and possible approval of resolution number zero-nine dash twenty-twenty, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding between the Village of Cross Plains and Capital Off-Road Pathfinders Company. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? I have a motion in a second to approve the resolution number zero-nine dash twenty-twenty. It's open for discussion. Bill, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, so this is a memorandum of understanding. Now that this went to the Park and Rec Committee for discussion and recommendation to the village board, and so believe that the continued memorandum of understanding specifies maintenance and signage, something that we're happy to work with, works on, and again, it's been good partners.
All right, any other discussion? Michael, and then Bill.
Yeah, I just have a question. Inside this memorandum of understanding, it, it talks about construction and maintenance. Was this more supposed to be a maintenance memorandum?
It's supposed to be a maintenance, yeah.
Because this has construction all over it, yeah. This is like the first one.
Correct, yeah, it's a copy, it's an extension of the first. It's continued maintenance, but we can definitely amend it to take that off if that favors you.
I think that would allow for, if there ever was any plans to, in the next five years, to add anymore, but there are no plans to add anymore.
Yeah, there's no plans of this time to add anymore.
Okay, I have Bill than myself.
So, under the memorandum of understanding, under part number five, obligation of court, under their item number five, this is not developed, I mean, I know you already said you're not going to develop any, but this is for five years, so let's get it on the table. Not develop any new trails without gaining approval from the village and shall not modify existing trails without approval from the village parks and recreation. So is the intent to not create new trails without getting approval from the village board?
Okay, you're asking that to Bill?
I'm asking that to, well, if Michael's here, I'd ask him, but, or, or to Sarah, or to Bill.
Well, yeah, again, my understanding that it's fully built out. Any new construction of trails really has historically gone to the Park and Rec Committee, and Sarah, you can correct me on if I'm wrong on that, but Mike does a pretty good job on bringing this up to the Park and Rec Board.
So my issue with that is, is I don't, for, right now, we, we have the mountain bike trail contained over by Cedar Ridge, which is fine. When they initially wanted to do this, they really, you guys were looking at doing trails all through the kind of conservancy area, back over there, you know, on the other side of town. And I want the village board specifically to approve any new trails. If they're going outside the Cedar Glen area that's currently in there, then, you know, that's, you know, upgrading or changing, that's fine. But any new trails, I would like to see the village board make that determination from advice from the Park and Rec Committee.
Okay, so it's myself, and then Michael, all right. Now, on your thing with the construction, I think we should leave that in. I think some people will differ on what is maintenance and what's construction. some people will differ on what is maintenance and what's construction. So if there's an erosion on one of their trails and they build a retaining wall or something to rebuild it, some people will call that construction versus maintenance. So I don't have a problem with leaving both in. I think it's a sounder practice. I think with Bill asking for the it to be approved by the village, I think we're covered even with construction in there. And I agree with them that it should come, any new construction should come through the board here, but I can see where trails might, where some people would define something as construction versus maintenance. So I think we should keep that in. I think it should be clear that it's the village board, not the committee. Right, right. All right, Michael.
Yeah, with regard to number five, I think that that because it doesn't say construction inside the conservancies, which limits it to just these two conservancies, this doesn't say anything about that. So I believe that that number five is specifically saying that if they want to build trails in any other conservancies, they have to have approval from the village. But yet the way the MOU is written in general, it pretty much allows them to build any trails that they want to inside of this conservancy with the approval of the Parks and Rec Director.
Yeah, but he's saying he wants it clear that defining village is not village staff, it's not the village parks and recreation, it's the village board. That's what he's asking for. A clarification, the language is there, but it should say village board versus village as a generic term. That's my understanding.
You're exactly correct.
Well, all you want is in addition of for.
Just add the word board.
Yeah.
To the word village and I would be happy.
Any other? Okay, Michael?
Yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying in terms of construction, but I would like to see this be more of a maintenance agreement because construction means they could go in there, build any trails that they want. There's still the allowing of cutting of trees ten inches in diameter in here. They could go in there and completely redesign their trails. If they so choose, chose to.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, I have Kevin.
Construction and maintenance, even if they have to construct something, I think it's fine. I'm happy with the way it is. They got Village Park and Rec checking the balance, so I say we move on.
All right, so I will need, I have at least one motion to add the word village board.
Oh, I'll, yeah, I'll actually make that motion.
Go ahead then.
So for the MOU, for that we're discussing in in section five obligation of court, number five, add the term not developing any new trails without gaming approval village from the village boards, adding the word board to that sentence.
Okay. All right, any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so then.
You're doing the.
What's that?
You have to name.
I can't.
All opposed.
All opposed. All right. So now we're back to the original motion with that language change. Is there any other discussion on that? All right, all in favor say aye. All opposed, the same.
Aye.
Okay, did you get that, Bill? All right, so moved. Okay, number three, discussion and possible action on the ordinance to repeal and recreate section twenty-one point zero nine sub A and B concerning animal control.
I'll make a motion that we we repeal and recreate section two one point zero nine A and B concerning animal control with the caveat of a ten-foot leash.
I should have did discussion before that. Okay, do I have a second? Okay, let's let's go to discussion. I think here's, I'm going to start this out because and here's where I see the pro, I'm not sure what was changed in sub A. I didn't see any red on that, so I I don't know. But in B, here's my concern on it. What we're basically doing is basically saying a dog owner or an animal because that's the term here, but let's just use dog because that's most common. Basically has to have the animal under control and we've so narrowly defined what control is, is basically having a leash on the animal. So when I read this, if we have somebody with a dog and it attacks another dog or dogs jump on other people or jump on other animals or go after wildlife, there's just no control on that. And I don't think that's what we want. We want responsible ownership and we want other people to be able to use our parks without worrying about a dog jumping on them or another dog coming up to their dog. So what I am suggesting is I'll leave the leash as just a leash, but at the end of the the sentence held meaning connected to a leash held by a person at all times and control the action and conduct of the animal. All persons bringing an animal into a public area should not allow the animal to have contact with other persons, domestic animals or wildlife without prior consent from the person or the owner of the animal. And now what that does, it puts some ownership on these dogs that they can't have go down there with a leash of twenty-five feet and let it pretty much run at 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 risk. So I'm not going to be able to support this with just that language. I don't think it goes far enough to protect other citizens in our parks. The counter would be having a limitation on the length of the leash because then it'd be harder for that to happen easier, but I think we have to have one or the other. Because I can't support just having a leash. Bill?
So I I do not think we need to penalize the members of or the community of the village across plains for the for penalize ninety-nine percent of the of a population of the village cross plains for one percent of the people that are are not taking care of being good, responsible pet owners. Oh, I think it's wrong to do that. I don't have any problem with Jay's changes to that because your pet should be under control and your pet should be on leash. However, we define under control, I think is great. But saying that there's a lot of people out there that walk with longer than a six-foot leash and they're responsible dog owners. And when there another dog comes in or a person comes in, they reel that dog in. So I think it's wrong to to make ninety-nine percent of the population, the village cross plains suffer for one percent that are doing it wrong. Let's take care of the one percent and 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 take care of that. So that's my.
Okay, Kevin, can I ask you if we define control more with that be satisfy satisfy your needs than than length?
I don't mind the way you redefined it, but I think you could ask chief about enforceability of a term of terms like you read out. And it would be easy to come up and I said ten foot, Bill, not six foot. But but it's easy to measure a leash, right? And if it's twelve foot, is is the chief or another officer going to, you know, yell and pull them? No. But if it's twenty-five feet or thirty feet or the thirty-six foot one I saw the other day, the trainer, you know, I mean, what's this, who's to say? So I think you'll have to limit it. I did do my research and looked at about twelve, fifteen communities. About half of them had a length. Six and eight were most most common and other half didn't have anything. So it's about a split down the middle, to be honest. I just think ten is easier to enforce or a number is easier to enforce than a bunch of verbiage that you have to interpret.
Okay, I'm going to speak too. I agree. I looked at a lot of these and they did have the leash, but even with the leash, that wasn't good enough. They still had language in there that you have to control your animal. Just by putting it on a leash is not control. And so like the ones I looked at still had mentioned, you still have to control the action and conduct of the of the, and most of these were dogs they talked about. Few use the word animals. We've kind of incorporated everything. All right, Judy.
I can support the way you read, just read it that rather than putting in the the length. I would like to see without any kind of length and control.
Okay, what am I hearing from? Michael?
I agree with your definition of control and the non-length on the leash.
All right, Lori?
I like having a length. I like having ten foot there again, since we've been talking about this. And my concern is most people and maybe it's up at Glacier Creek, people are not leashing their animals at all. They have no control of their animals. And therefore they're running after other animals that are on a leash. If my dog was on a, one of those twenty-five foot, there's no way I could control it. If you have, and I think size of dog might matter, but the littler dogs also are running. I don't know what to do. It's an issue and I apologize. I wasn't at the meeting on Monday night. But I I just really feel that there's a dog issue here and someone's going to get hurt. People are not abiding by any of our ordinances, so.
All right, Sarah?
I think one or the other needs to be in place. I think that Kevin has a point that it's easier to enforce. It's not, it's more objectively evaluated, you know, is it ten or twelve foot maximum versus what's considered under control? But one of the two has to be.
All right, Bill than myself.
So it sounds like Lori, that what you're saying is not necessarily that the dog is not on a leash that's causing the problem is you're talking about dogs that are not on leashes that need to be, that need to be on a leash. I mean, I mean, so if if you're if you're a pet owner, right? And you know that you can't control your dog with a twenty-five foot lead, you should not have a twenty-five foot lead. That makes you a responsible dog owner. If 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 I have a fifteen foot lead and I can control my dog with that, that makes me a responsible dog owner. Right? My wife doesn't use that. She uses an eight-foot lead because that's what she can, that's what she can control the dog with, right? Because because he's a bigger, heavier, muscular dog. So it's not government's responsibility to to wean the community and what they should do. We have, if we have ordinances, they need to be enforced. When I lock my dog, I'm walking over in Xander Park and there's no, there's no police in Xander Park to see that, right? The only place I'm going to see a police is if I'm walking on Bourbon or if I'm walking on the streets. But in the parks, police aren't going to see what I'm doing. They're not going to see what other dog owners are doing. But I think in my opinion that we we have faith in our community. We tell them what the rule is and if they don't follow the rule, then we have consequences for that. And that's up to our police department to take care of that.
I I am agreeing with everybody. My whole thing, I guess I'm coming from the length to me is not as important because I've been down in Xander Park a lot. I've been doing a lot of trout fishing lately, so I'm down there a lot. And there are people afraid of dogs. I just about every time I'm down there, I see the reaction of people. I'm glad that park is getting used as much as it is. But I don't know if I'm walking down there and I don't like dogs, I don't think a dog should jump on me.
You're right.
And it doesn't matter how long the leashes on that, it's a control. So I'd rather, you know, and that's why I kind of wrote this, I'd rather try to police the conduct than the tool. And I think the police are not going to get called on this, but if we have a constant where someone has got a dog that is basically picking on other dogs and the owner's not controlling it, there's enforceable action with this kind of language. If we just go with the length of the lease leash, there is no enforcement because it's measuring the the leash. And if they're on a ten or eight foot, then there is no violation. There is no way of correcting that behavior. And I think that's what we want to do is make sure the behavior is right. Now granted, the shorter the leash, the easier it is to get the the control. So I have Kevin.
Sarah was.
Yeah, you just. Oh, Sarah, Kevin, then Sarah.
You you just said one of the points I was going to make, the shorter the leash, the easier it is for people to control. If you have a sixteen-foot retractable leash and you're standing on the paved path at Xander Park, you can reach the fence, the dog can reach the fence on one side and the creek on the other side. It's thirty-two feet.
But you can't. You can't.
Is it my time, Bill, or your time?
I'm sorry.
Just like, yeah.
I'm sorry.
And they, yes, they can, or they can reach the weeds. I've seen people walk around them. One. Two, and forget my bias against retractable leashes, which I think are terrible for dogs and for people because of varying lengths. That length is, or the area you're covering is three times the amount of an eight-foot leash, sixteen verse eight or six, whatever. I checked the math on it. It's it's about three times the area that this dog can reach. That's another issue. And the third point is if you're on a sidewalk, which we have few of, but around the side of the road, that dog can reach across to the middle of the road and can reach into the yard fifteen feet. Yes, should they be on and be watched? Sure. But is everybody that good? No, this is a tool to help make people better dog owners. I would support your language, Jay, the language that Jay said, but I would think it's easier to put some sort of limit in there. I was happier with six. I could live with ten because it helps the police chief and others enforce their own behaviors.
Okay, I have Sarah.
I just want to say that I think it's it's too, it's pretty subjective, like what's under control. I think Lori mentioned, you know, I have a dog that is on a leash all the time. He's very afraid of other dogs to walk to him. Now, this has happened where other people will come up to my dog. Oh, he's fine, he's fine. Well, I don't care what you think of your dog. My dog doesn't like when he's on a leash, he becomes very insecure. And I also am concerned because I oftentimes see children out walking dogs and they don't have the control over the animal. And I think that it would be easier to enforce a length of that because how do you enforce that when there's our children out walking the dog and they don't have control over the animal?
Well, I can tell you, the wording in there, they have, for someone to come up to you with their dog, they would have to get permission from you. That's what it says. If the dog just comes up, jumps on you or jumps on your dog, they're in violation of the ordinance. It's easy to enforce because you didn't give consent.
And so how do you enforce it with kids?
Well, there obviously it depends on the age. It would be more educational and probably talk with the parent. Oh, no, I'm not debating that. I I we can't come up, but I just want to say this is not a difficult thing to enforce. Because the burden is on the dog owner for their dog to go to someone else or someone else's dog to ask first. Do you mind if I bring my dog over? Because they need to have consent for that to happen. All right, we, okay, Lori?
So Xander Park, I won't even walk my dog there anymore because of the retractable leashes. And because people think their dog is nice and my dog should treat them nice also. And I mean, my dog is probably seventy pounds and I can hang on to my dog. But it's very difficult me getting a dog off my dog and still having control. I, and again, I don't want to be against the retractable leashes. And that's all we can do is encourage people to have control of their dogs. But I feel like the ten, I I think we need a leash limit. I don't know if Tony is still on here for his.
Yeah, I'll get to him, but I just, we're going to have to, we have to come up with something tonight because right now we don't have any protection out there. So we have to do something. Why don't we ask the chief's input? We'll do another round and then we're just going to make some votes and we'll see how things go. Is the chief still out there?
Yes, I'm here. Okay, so we've been debating this now for a few meetings. The the easiest way to do it is to have a a length on the leash. If you have, if you don't, then you're opening yourself up for dogs going all over the place. So I'm very comfortable with ten feet. I mean, you can tell when it's a ten feet and as opposed to twenty, twenty-five feet and those kind of things. Are we going to get out of the car and measure the leash and make sure that they're exactly ten feet? No, that's not the case. I also like the the language that Jay has proposed because it gives you a little more. understanding of what control means. And so I, I do think, you know, people are getting bit. We've had, uh, five cases in the last six months. Uh, where either a dog bit a person or bit another dog. Um, so I, I think it's, it's time to look at this and, and strictly enforce it. Now, the issue that we have, that we're having is that people aren't calling to enforce these things. So it, it really, it's almost like a needle in a haystack to try to find it. Cause when, when we're driving around, people aren't just letting their dogs run at large. You'll, you'll see people grab their dogs and, and have them on leashes and those kind of things. We are however enforcing it. We, we've had multiple cases where we've issued a citation and, and/or a warning depending on the, on the circumstance. So I do think a decision needs to be made and I would very much support a ten foot leash with a, with a strong language provided by Jay. I, I think that gets us started. We can always look at this again if, if, you know, if it's not working out, but that at least gives us something. And then encouraging people to call us so we can actually, you know, find, find these. They don't have to provide us their names. I mean, just simply say, hey, we've got a, a loose dog out here and then we can go to it and handle it.
All right, thank you, chief. I think, uh, what we have right now on the table, we have a motion uh, to place a ten foot in length or shorter leash. And that was seconded.
All right.
Um, and we were at the discussion. I guess I will make a motion to add the language that I stated to that, uh, motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so any discussion on the language that I suggested?
Yeah, can you read that again?
Yeah, and again.
We don't have it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And at the end of that sentence where it talks about under control meaning connected to a leash held by a person at all times and control the action and conduct of the animal. All persons bringing an animal into a public area shall not allow the animal to have contact with another person, domestic animal or wild animal without prior consent from the person or owner of the animal. All right, so on the motion with this language that was just read, I want to do a roll call vote.
So the motion is ten feet with that?
No, right now we're just adding this language to that original motion. We haven't voted on that. Yeah, it would, it will be, but this, this, this motion is just for the language.
Uh, trustee Francois?
Uh, yes.
Trustee Xander?
Yes.
Trustee Popikowski?
Yes.
Trustee Thucius?
Yes.
Trustee Kellaborder?
And you're saying just adding yours?
Yep.
Yes, oh, yes.
Trustee Brocious?
Yes.
President Langfellow?
Yes. So now we're back to the original motion that will have that language added and add a, where it says on a ten foot in length or shorter. So the part that's crossed out in red will be changed to ten feet in length or shorter. That's what the motion is right now. Okay, Bill?
So, uh, I walk Xander almost every day.
Yep.
And I've talked to quite a few pet owners walking in the park because there's a lot of pet owners in there.
Yep.
Some have a fixed leash, some have a retractable. And, uh, I didn't run into anybody, honestly, I didn't run into anybody that had a problem with a retractable leash that had, as long as, as, as long as their dog was under control, that's what they were concerned about. They, they don't want dogs jumping on them. They don't want dogs attacking their, their dogs. If, if the dog is under control, that's what they want and that's a responsible dog owner. I'd be admittedly against, uh, having a length, a ten foot length in here.
Okay. Are there any other comments on that? And I want to make sure, does everybody understand what we're gonna be voting on? Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Trustee Brocious?
No.
Trustee Kellaborder?
No.
Trustee Thucius?
Yes.
Trustee Popikowski?
No.
Trustee Xander?
Yes.
Trustee Francois?
Yes.
President Langfellow?
I'm gonna say yes.
Motion carries.
We do the same for the parks.
Uh, let me get back on track here. Okay, discussion and possible action on an ordinance to repeal and recreate section seventy-two point zero three sub R sub three concerning pets.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance to repeal and recreate section seven-two point zero-three R three concerning pets with the amendment of ten feet or shorter in length.
I'll second.
Okay, I, I think what we should have, I think it would have been cleaner if we would have just adopted the language that we did at, at twenty-one, uh, and zero-nine, because now what's gonna happen? This one is just gonna have the leash thing and not the control language in it. So we have two different ordinances.
Did, did anybody second that motion yet?
Yeah, yeah.
But, well, I thought in discussion.
Okay, we can do that if we, all right. I, I guess I will make a motion that we duplicate the language that we came up with for section twenty-one point zero-nine sub A, um, into this section. Okay, so now we have the discussion of the language change on the original. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same. All right, now we're back to the original, so it will add the ten feet or shorter in length and the language on control, which fits right in on the, the same, right at the end. All right, any discussion on that? Let's do a roll call vote.
Uh, Lori, uh, trustee Xander?
Yes.
Trustee Popikowski?
No.
Trustee Thucius?
Yes.
Trustee Kellaborder?
No.
Trustee Brocious?
No.
Trustee Francois?
Yes.
President Langfellow?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Discussion and possible action to extend the Cross Plains pool season.
So I can, uh, give a presentation here before there's any, uh, motion on this. I don't, I believe, um, that parking right, uh, staff, uh, and I believe uh, some of you may have received, um, requests, um, from the public extending the pool season into September. Um, currently we are, um, have been approved previously to go through August twenty-third. Um, as part of the packet, you will see, um, first of all, a proposed agenda, a proposed hours of operation within the memo itself. Um, and then also, uh, spreadsheets on the budgets. The first spreadsheet here, um, shows a deficit of approximately seventy thousand dollars. Had the pool opened at the regular time, um, May twenty-fifth to August twenty-third. The second spreadsheet here shows a deficit of forty-seven, forty-eight thousand dollars, uh, with the current full opening July first to August twenty-third. And then the third spreadsheet here shows, uh, a deficit of fifty-eight thousand dollars if we were to open the pool until September seventh. And so, um, Mike X and the Parks and Right Director, um, is requesting, um, for your thoughts and action to continue the pool, uh, to September twenty, September seventh, um, as requested by the public.
All right, we're definitely gonna do a discussion first on this. Um, I, I just wanna make sure people are seeing that. To keep the pool open an extra two weeks, we would be spending almost eleven thousand dollars. So that's a lot of money for two weeks. And considering we're taking a hit on the SROs already, um, I just, I just wanted to throw that out, out there that, uh, for two weeks, that's the price tag. So I had Kevin, Sarah, Lori. Right?
Uh, is that right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I, I still think when we, I mean, there's obviously things that have changed, but it's still eleven thousand dollars less expensive than if it had been open the entire normal season.
Okay, Sarah?
Uh, just a couple of comments. I'm wondering what the, um, was there surplus in the correspondence? Uh, that helped with that and also just thinking that with the Milton Cross Plains School District extended and starting the school to September eighth, that it would make a big difference for a lot of the community members to have a pool open, it might be stuff.
Bill?
So is this state school not opening till September seventh?
Eight, I think seventh is the holiday.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's later, yeah, that's Monday, Labor Day.
Eleven thousand dollars is a lot of money and we're watching, we're watching pennies.
Well, I, again, I, you know, I'm looking, to be honest with you, the SRO, we lost ten thousand for the spring semester. If the fall semester doesn't go at all, that's twenty thousand.
How we losing money in the SRO?
Because we're not getting reimbursed from the school district.
We have a contract.
Well, I mean, we're, we're looking into that, but you gotta remember, uh, the contract is for when.
Actual time.
Actual time, that's, I mean, we're looking into it, but in fairness, is it fair for them to pay for an officer that's not providing any service to them, but it's providing service to the cross planes? It's a, it's a discussion we have to have, but the bottom line is, uh, I, we're not gonna get, we're not gonna get full amount.
It, it shouldn't be our responsibility if the school district's not opening, that we have a contract with, I mean, that's a different discussion. I understand that, but I mean, we should not be taking a hit on the SRO.
I think there's a lot of contractors at the school district contracts that are not getting paid. All right, any other discussion on, uh, the pool? Lori?
Do we know, um, is the pool usually busy during the days? Are kids utilizing it? I'm assuming since he's asking.
Well, I, we could, I mean, I don't know what, I drive by, I see people, I don't see it packed, but I don't know. Cause I thought we were at seventy people and it doesn't appear that there's seventy when I go by. But it's, there's definitely people in the pool and it's been a hot summer, so, um, I don't know what, uh, they must be doing counting, aren't they? Since they have to keep track?
Yeah, they have a, they have a online sign-on.
Okay, I guess my thought is the kids have lost quite a bit. And there, if school doesn't start, this is actually, I feel, money well spent keeping the pool open.
Judy?
It's little less than eight hundred dollars a day, which is a ton of money to me when I think about it as equal to eleven thousand. Um, I just, I don't know. I know for the kids' sake it'd be great, but I just can't support spending eight hundred dollars a day.
And I, I guess my feeling is I don't, if this becomes a priority and we do it, I just want everybody to remember that somewhere else down the line, we're gonna have to pull something. So I just, you know, that's just what I wanted to throw out there. I'm kinda on the fence on this one because I agree the kids are losing out on a lot of things. And this is an activity that they can do potentially pretty safe with chlorine water and stuff. Then on the other hand, it's a big price. I have Bill then Kevin.
Do we know where the money's coming from at all, Bill?
We don't. Well, uh, I know that Mike's working hard to try to balance the overall parking right budget. Um, I know that Mike's not taking on any new programs unless they are kind of surplus, to try to balance out the pool. Um, otherwise we'd be getting into our fund balance. Um, we do have a contingency here and you'll see later that we'll be amending our current budget uh, to cover, um, some expenses that we already do have. That's all I can do right now.
Okay.
Okay, Kevin, then myself, and then Lori, do you wanna speak? Okay, go ahead, Kevin.
Uh, just speaking of the budget again, um, I think we, when we encouraged Mike to go back and open the pool up a couple of months ago, uh, we passed unanimously that he, that he should do that. I think it was unanimous anyway, couldn't find my, just quickly couldn't find the, uh, my minutes from that meeting. Uh, but I'm pretty sure it was unanimous. Um, and I think if he, at the time, he had asked for two more weeks, eleven thousand dollars more, I don't think he would have blinked an eye. And I understand that it looks like a, well, eleven thousand dollars now. Uh, it's still eleven thousand less than we budgeted, first of all, beginning of the year. So I, I strongly support this and I'd like to make a motion to extend the pool season two more weeks to September seventh.
All right, we're at the discussion, then I, I had Sarah, or no, I had myself, right, I guess. Um, yeah, there is some funds in the fund balance to cover. I just, I, like, again, we're getting close to the budget, we're getting close to the end of the year. So I just wanna make sure everybody has a clear understanding of the ramifications of this. And, uh, like I say. Lori?
I, I mean, even if we could extend it a week and not the two weeks, but I, I really feel strongly that I think it's just important that the kids have something to do and it was budgeted, so I think, I just think it's something we need to do.
Bill, so if we can definitively say where this money's gonna come from, that would, you know, and, and we can afford that, I would support it. But if we can't, if we can't right now say where that money's coming from, that's just an eleven thousand dump. I mean, I, I agree, the pool's been great for as long as we've had it open. But, you know, we, we are not, we are not the federal government. We don't, we, we, we need to balance our budget, right? And if, like Jay said, if we take this eleven thousand for two weeks for the pool, then something else is gonna suffer from another group uh, that we need the money for, for that. So if you guys are fine with that, you know, that's your prerogative. But I, I think, you know, we're, we need to kind of watch where this is coming, where, how we're gonna, where we're gonna get that money from.
It's gonna come from either the fund balance of, uh, Park and Rec or the fund balance, the general fund balance.
I think Park and Rec has a balance, isn't that the inflation?
Yeah, they do, they do. They can cover it and so can our general. And, and, and it's not bad, it's just that then that money's not available and we talked about the twenty-twenty-one budget. So like I say, I just, I just throw that out there that it is to me a high price tag. You know, eleven thousand in two weeks is, to me, a lot of money. Um, but, um, we do have to do things for our kids and the families and they have been taking a beating this year, so, Sarah?
I guess I just feel strongly about it because the school is going back virtually. If school was starting a week later and they were going to be in the buildings, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, um, necessarily be so, feel so strongly about it. But these kids are all looking at never meeting their teacher possibly, never seeing their friends in school all year. It's just, it's a really big, hard thing that we, none of us in this room have ever had to deal with for them.
Okay. All right, I think we've had a good discussion. Why don't we do a roll call vote, please?
Uh, trustee Kellaborder?
No.
Trustee Thucius?
Yes.
Trustee Popikowski?
No.
Trustee Xander?
Yes.
Trustee Francois?
Yes.
Trustee Brocious?
Yes.
President Langfellow?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, number six, discussion and possible action regarding a policy on naming rights for parkland, conservation land and regional trails and/or facilities.
Okay, um, so this is something that had gone to the Park and Right Committee, um, I believe. And with discussion, and the reason why this has come up is we do have scenic valley in the near term here and then a few more developments to potential parks. And people are asking, you know, what the names of parks in regards to planning parks. And, you know, we haven't found a process or a policy behind naming conventions, not only parks, but other uh, infrastructure, trails, uh, we talk about facilities in here. So this is a, a, kind of a stab at that, try to, to put something into, onto paper. Sarah, you can go ahead and add any comment from the committee you'd like.
I, no, I don't have anything to add.
So were you looking was part, was this their recommendation, this language? Or was this just more of an informational and then they were gonna refine it? Or this is, is this an end product?
This is the end product.
Okay.
I think Mike got a lot of it consulting other.
Sure, yeah, I just wanted to know where we were at. So do I have a, why don't we go with a motion?
That's what I was gonna do.
Okay, go ahead.
I was gonna make a motion that we approve the parks, conservation land, and/or facility naming policy.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Kevin, say, any discussion? I think it was nicely done.
He did a good job.
Yeah, I did too, I, um, we provided something to him a long time ago, I, my only question was regional trail. I didn't understand what a regional trail was, I mean, does that mean? I think region, I think, can you help me?
I think you're talking about when a regional trail comes in.
Okay, so not, even if there's a trail, like we had the mountain bike group here earlier, maybe they wanted to name one of their loops the something loop. Would that be considered a regional trail?
I think that ATV is regional in this novel field.
Yeah, so, yeah, so.
I would think your ace, your trails are regional, aren't they?
Yeah, we have, we have a segment naming policy, which I provided to Mike like two years ago.
Okay.
A while.
Okay.
Um, but, yeah, so I, but I'm wondering, like, I, I think this could be, doesn't need to be regional. I mean, I just don't know why, I, I just think, take the regional part out of that, I think you can name a trail or a loop or
Okay.
So I just think that it's, it's confusing, I guess. If you can name it in the village, you can name it, or one that passes through, you can name it all within the village, a trail within the village.
Does it say regional in the actual policy? I didn't see that.
It's in the purpose.
Oh, the purpose. Oh, yeah, okay. Was he talking about maybe part of like a regional trail, like, you know, they're talking about the one going from Black Earth to Wild? So different, that would be a regional trail, but the part that's in cross plains we would name and the one in Black Earth they could name? Is that possible?
It's, it's possible, but I would just only suggest, or at least send a clarifier to Mike, I don't know if we need to change the motion, just to include trails that are also within a conservancy, let's say.
Okay, sounds good. All right, we have a motion in a second to, um, adopt the policy on naming rights for parkland, conservation land, trails, and facilities. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. All right, we're on to discussion and possible action to approve the twenty nineteen compliance maintenance annual report. This is up Jerry. Is he on?
Jerry is on.
I think I am, no. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Jerry, go ahead.
Okay. Our annual wastewater treatment plant, uh, report card. This is the first year we've had, uh, anything but straight A's. And that's due to the clear water entering the collection system and getting down to the plant, potentially affecting treatment. Luckily, we did not have any treatment violations as a result of it, but, um, it is something that we need to address, uh, as required by the DNR due to the grade we received on, uh, that particular section. So I've spelled out a plan to, um, address the issue. And I've included, uh, line items in the CIP. There are, besides just, um, satisfying the DNR, so to speak, there are, uh, factors relative to this problem that do have an economic impact on the village. I spelled them out at the end of my, uh, report there. So I guess, uh, I'm open to questions.
Okay, so the only, I see the one C grade is the only one that's problematic, right?
Correct.
And we're looking to get some studies and so, we're, we're looking to deal with it in the twenty twenty-one budget, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And is there anything that the state requires, uh, the village board to do, or just for us to be notified and then make, uh, to take steps to fix it?
Uh, well, you have to approve the acceptance of this twenty nineteen CMAR. I have to send in proof that you did it and include the uh, steps that we're gonna take to address that poor grade on that one section.
Okay. All right, does anybody have any questions for Jerry on this report? Do I have a motion to approve the twenty nineteen compliance maintenance annual report? Okay, I have the motion, Sarah, do you second? I have a second, so I have a motion and a second to approve the twenty nineteen compliance maintenance annual report. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. Nicely done, Jerry, that's goo- good report card, even though we got that C. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, we're on to number eight, discussion and possible action on the planning and public involvement for well three. So if you look at, uh, the dates that are are picked, you know, I guess I'm a little, so the, the Tuesday, Thursday, and the other Thursday are all evening meetings? Choices?
I believe so, yeah, we have, um, Brian on here, Brian, can you clarify if, if you intended for those to be evening meetings or day meetings?
That was our intention, but if, if the group feels that afternoons on those days would be uh, better, we, we could certainly accommodate that.
No, I, I guess what I'm saying is it, it says Monday, August twenty-fourth, day meeting. So I'm just assuming the, the eighteenth, the twentieth, and twenty-seventh would be evening meetings?
The, the reason why it's marked as a day meeting on the twenty-fourth is because we have a little four meeting.
Oh, gotcha, okay, all right. So are you looking for one date, two dates, or what from us?
Uh, we were thinking something like this would usually just be one meeting.
Okay.
With the, assuming that everyone agrees that it's it's mostly gonna be impactful for the folks that are adjacent to the property.
Okay.
For the folks that are two and three and four houses away are not as impacted, so we would suggest a single meeting. And if, if folks cannot attend that, uh, then we could certainly set up another one.
And were you still looking to have them onsite or looking here at the library?
Uh, given where things are with distancing, we would prefer onsite, uh, to give us a chance to kinda literally lay out the corners of the building or approximate corners of the building, walk people through it. Uh, we'd we'd come with a couple, two, three of our staff, myself, Ben, and maybe another engineer, and, and literally just have some informal chats with four or five people per engineer to walk people through it, so, yeah, we would prefer outside at the, at the site.
Okay. So, uh, for the group, did you happen to look at these dates in your calendars, what would work best? And I guess it wouldn't have to be everybody there. It's not like we're gonna do, it's, it's more of a neighborhood information meeting. Is there a preference for any, so Bill?
I don't think the day meeting would be
No.
Good, I mean, I think it would have to be either the Tuesday, Thursday, or Thursday. And, and any of those three days are fine.
All right, so Monday's out. Uh, anybody else have a date that they would prefer it not being, we'll do this by elimination? August twenty-seventh is out, okay, we're down to the eighteenth or the twentieth. Anybody have a problem with either of those dates? All right. So, do we have a preference on a Tuesday or Thursday?
Tuesday morning, in the morning.
No, it's gonna be in the evening. Or early evening probably, it's gotta be lit, it's gotta be daylight. The eighteenth. Everybody good with the eighteenth?
I concur.
Kevin?
Uh, since it's outdoors, might as well set up the eighteenth and make this one a rainy day.
Oh, perfect, good idea. All right. Well, that, that's a little different, because that's an official committee, this is, uh, information, and I think it's better to have it onsite, I agree. So they can visualize, so why don't we do this? We're gonna have the meeting scheduled for August eighteenth and the rain date will be August twentieth.
Sounds good.
What time were you looking, Brian?
I would toss out six PM.
Sounds good.
Six PM?
Yes, sir.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
All righty. Six PM it is. I guess we'll
Great.
Jay, did you want to, uh, leave any time here before you move on to the next item, discussion in regards to the renderings of the wild?
Um, and, and what do you speak to what? I, I guess to me, those renderings are what they thought. I would, there's no sense really discussing until we listen to what the neighbors have to say, because I'm certainly gonna listen to them and that would modify, I don't think we should come up with a lot of discussion. And then the neighborhood say, no, let's do something. Kevin?
Yeah, my only comment, uh, for Brian and the others is that every, the three renderings we got were, were pretty distant and obscured. Um, I, maybe because that's where people, well, except for, they wouldn't be flying over. But, uh, certainly they'd see it at a distance, I think showing something that's a little bit closer up and, and actually what the facade looks like, I, I can't get a good sense from the three renderings we have here.
Oh, sure, you bet.
Thank you.
I think what they were doing is from the street shot, what it looked like from the street. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the, the hope was to show what it would look like from the street for just general public and then from the, the side yards of the two neighbors. Uh, but, yeah, we can, we certainly know what, uh, it looks like on the computer, at least right now, we can, we can eliminate those obstructions for sure.
All right, um, do you want a motion on this, Bill? I, I didn't think so, we're just setting up a public information, all right, anything else? I, the fiscal impact, that's gonna come in when we talk about capital, so I don't wanna spend a whole lot of time on that right now. All right, everybody good? All right, let's go to, the next one is discussion and possible action on budgeting recommendations from the finance subcommittee. Is Bobby out there?
Bobby is here.
I'm here.
Do you wanna, uh, take us through, through it?
I can, I can actually take it.
Okay, all right.
So, uh, so the finance subcommittee has been meeting almost, uh, weekly on Tuesdays. Uh, and have gone through a number of, of financial policies, procedures, county measures. And thus, and so, uh, there, there are, uh, three recommendations here that the subcommittee, uh, had discussed and thus recommending to the, the village board. Jay, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but in regards to, uh, setting up the capital improvement fund for, uh, next, going into next year, the recommendation was to keep the, the fund balance at, um, fifty thousand dollars. I believe right now we have approximately three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the check, in, in cash balance in the capital improvement fund. And you'll see later that, uh, the recommendation, uh, for, for the remaining, uh, capital improvement projects in twenty twenty will be affected by this, this decision. Um, second to that, uh, maintaining a debt service fund balance, fund, fund balance of zero. I believe we, we do have some cash in there, just, just through adjustments to the year. In our discussion, we, we thought that it would make sense to keep that as zero and continue with, um, budget amendments to the year to, to, to keep us on track. And then, and so that we're actually monitoring that. And then third, uh, we do know that currently, now, Park and Rec, um, fund is currently represented as a separate fund. Uh, one of the, the recommendations here would be to move that into the overall general fund, so it'll be a departmental budget. And thus moving, uh, the fund balance into the general fund, fund balance.
So what I'd like to do is, we'll do a motion for each one and then we'll have the discussion have more detail explaining of it. So do I have a motion, uh, to maintain the capital improvement fund, funds, fund balance at fifty thousand? All right, do I have a second? All right, I have a motion and a second, uh, to maintain the capital improvement funds, fund balance at fifty thousand. I just wanna clarify, all of these would not take effect until January first due to the accounting nightmare would be to change. And the logic in this is you want enough money in there, all capital projects are approved on an individual basis. That's what we do. You want a little bit of money there in case an unforeseen, something happens where they need a little bit more. Instead of going out to borrow a thousand bucks, you have some money there to take it from the, the fund balance. Uh, as Bill said, originally when we started, it was actually, uh, at four hundred thousand. Now, obviously, we're gonna be using that up, some of that as we go on later in this meeting, but that's borrowed money that we're paying interest in sitting in a bank where it is not, I don't think financially smart. So we're looking at just having enough there to cover in case something goes over or not. That's the reasoning behind it. Okay, I have Kevin and then Bill.
Is there a logical, is, would somebody argue the opposite, that there would be more, that won't be the argument to be more in there?
We couldn't come up with, that's why, that's why we recommended it, there, there's just, it didn't make sense, because those things are all individual items, it's not like you have salaries and overtime that you have to worry about, these are items that we're gonna purchase. Bill?
Is that fifty thousand a minimum or maximum?
It, well, it's, it's what we wanna keep it at, so if it goes down a little, if it's forty-five one year, no big deal. If it's fifty-five one year, you know, we're not gonna just spend it to spend it down, so we're trying to keep it around fifty thousand.
Okay.
So it's, I would, to answer your question, it's both.
Good, thank, uh, I have the same question, thank Bill. The, uh, does that mean that January one, we wanted fifty thousand, or is that the goal? Even though it ranges throughout the year, I mean
Yes.
Every year, we generate one.
We would like it to be dedic, not necessarily does it have to be spent?
Yeah.
But it has to be restricted that this amount is going here, this amount is going here. Yes, you're right, it's gonna bounce up and down, because obviously, when we borrow, it's gonna be huge. And then as we buy the items, it's gonna be reduced, but at the end of the year after we bought everything, we wanna stay around fifty thousand.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, uh, let's take a roll call vote.
Trustee Xander? Trustee Pomakowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bucias?
Yes.
Trustee Kinnabolder?
Yes.
Trustee Brosius?
Yes.
Trustee Francois?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the second, uh, I'd like a motion to keep the debt service funds, fund balance at zero. Okay, the second, uh, I'd like a motion to keep the debt service funds, fund balance at zero.
I motion to keep the debt service fund balance at zero.
Okay, we have a second, uh, under discussion. The logic on this is we're debt services tied to borrowing. Our borrowing is for ten or twenty years. So there's really no purpose to have uh cash balance in that. If somehow there's a miscalculation on the interest or the service, then we just move pay for it somewhere else. It just sits there. There's no reason for the rate to change in that ten or twenty year period. Bill?
So do we just eliminate this fund?
No, you can't eliminate it. No, we can't eliminate debt service.
No, no, the debt service.
Yes, you're right. Yes. We're we're keeping it at zero. Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Oh, I see what you're saying. That part, yeah, it won't exist. So if there's any money left, let's say something happens that we get a rebate of two dollars or ten dollars. That'll be swept into the general fund.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay.
What's it at currently?
It's at forty eight thousand.
What will happen with that forty eight?
That'll go into our general.
Now or at the end of the year?
End of year. Everything's gonna have, we, it'd be too hard for the accountant to follow the money. So we're starting January first, these things will take place.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions or discussion? Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Uh, trustee Dusias?
Yes.
Trustee Pomakowski?
Yes.
Trustee Xander?
Yes.
Trustee Francois?
Yes.
Trustee Rosius?
Yes.
Trustee Calvobur?
Yes.
Yes. Alright, uh, the third one is to move the Parks and Recreation Fund into the general fund. Um, do I have a motion for that?
I moved to move the Park and Parks and Recreation Fund into the general fund.
We have a second. Alright, Lori, second. Um, discussion on, I have a motion and a second to move the Parks and Recreation Fund into the general fund. Again, uh, the reasoning behind this, this is how it used to be. I think it was probably five years ago when Matt was here. He took it out and I think the idea was he thought that would help on uh the levy limits. If they could have pulled it off because we bring in so much of the revenue to cover so many of the costs. But it doesn't reach the level of being an enterprise agency or a business-like agency where it can run on its own and not part of our regular budget. So it just complicates things that uh, we have basically an account which is Parks and Recreation away from the general fund, but doing the exact same thing. So you're duplicating, you know, fund balances and salaries and stuff when we should just go back to where it was, where it was all in under, under the general fund, like Public Works, Police and that, because it's not, it doesn't pay for itself a hundred percent to be uh, enterprising or business-like uh agency. Bill?
So, um, part of that discussion while we moved this over from general over to its own fund, to Park and Rec Fund was also to give the director an idea of how much money was coming in, how much money was being spent. He could, he, he could, Mike could, because Mike's been the director his whole time. Mike could say, I need a new person because here's so much money that we're getting in revenue. Here's so much money we're spending. Uh, I can pay for that part-time or full-time person. And it was easier for him to be able to get, thought was, it'd be easy for him, easy for him to have his own budget to say this is what he had money for and what you could justify, new programs, new, new salaries and that type of thing. So that is my apprehension about moving this back into general.
It, it, it should make no difference. It's not a standalone. It should make zero difference. He still can track revenues. Bobby still brings in that. They're still pulled out of it. So that should make zero changes in how he operates. And we asked him about this and he had no problem with it. So I have Sarah and Judy. He didn't have any concerns at all. Judy?
Really, it's just like a, a separate general ledger. We're gonna put it in there, but he'll still have his own general ledger. We'll still know what his credits and debts are, whatever else that he's using. So it's really just putting in the path, but he's still gonna be on it as far as me.
Bill?
Uh, I just, yeah, so we, we did, Mike and I did talk about this and Bobby's been put on it too. Um, yeah, it does make sense. I mean, all, uh, Rosius, trustee Rosius, although you talked about, he's still able to track that. Um, he'd still be able to track that through our regular budgeting process as a department instead of a separate fund. So, uh, in regards to creating programs and or creating a new position, as long as the revenue's supported, we'll be, we'll see that, um, you know, the year before, the year when we go. And that would be this justification and you'll see later on in the budget process. But we are changing things a bit here in that if he does wanna increase his, his operating budget to cover that, uh, he'll have a supplemental to his budget so that you are all aware of that. It, this is uh one of the parts in in kind of revamping our, our general operation budget in the way that we do budget.
Bill? So just, just as a note, I talked to my daughter who works in Parks and Rec in uh Washington State. It's a client, and I asked her, uh, where are you guys' money coming from general or do you have your own thing? And she goes, it's all in general. So, um, it was good to get her feedback on that, but uh, but thank you for, for let me know that, because that was important.
Alright, any other discussion? Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pomakowski?
Yes.
Trustee Dusias?
Yes.
Trustee Calvobur?
Yes.
Trustee Rosius?
Yes.
Trustee Francois? Trustee Xander? President Lang?
Yes. Yeah, alright. Go to item ten. Discuss, discussion and possible action regarding the twenty twenty capital budget uh projects. And again, I just wanna remind everybody, these were the things that we approved uh last year and now they're up to actually going out for bid and purchasing. So I will, who wants to take lead on this?
I can, I can take it first.
I would like to do things one at a time though.
And then we can break it down after that, for that. So just kinda general recap, these are projects approved in twenty twenty of approximately um, five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars um in projects. There's about twenty-two thousand four hundred that um has not been uh expended yet or has not been invoiced and paid yet. Um, so that includes the library roof, um, fire department equipment, I believe, fire department equipment, which includes um the H-back repair and E V equipment uh has been implemented, it just has not been invoiced at this point. Uh, there's the bucket truck, um, infrastructure, repair, general infrastructure, Gills Way and total trail repair. That's, that's regarding uh female repairs. And then a small project on Indian Park in regards to pedestrians. So, um, with that being said, our overall drill finance subcommittee, um, if you reserve a fifty thousand dollar fund balance, I believe that
I put, I have that three hundred and fifty thousand for my notes. Yours is lower, right?
Yeah, mine, minus lower. Um, because I back, what I, what I would do is I, I would back up those projects from the, what I did was three sixty, that's remaining in cash balance. And I don't know where you started.
I started at uh four hundred thousand subtracting fifty thousand for what we wanted to add fund balance and that got me at three hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and eighty-four. So, so I'm, I'm, is your fifth, so your number of three eighty-three, is that with the fifty thousand in there?
Correct.
So you'd have to back that out. So we're about twenty thousand different.
Right.
Okay.
That's because where we started.
Yeah, okay. So I guess what I would like to do, um, is let's um take a look at what's on your PDF page ninety-six. And um i- as you can see, what we approve, um we can cover with what we have in our fund, capital fund balance right now. So we wouldn't have to borrow. Now, what I'd like to do is just pull some out because when we talk about Jerry's area, if you saw, he did a memo because some things came in higher. He's got alternatives to purchasing some. So what I'd like to do is start with the roof. We've approved that. I see no reason to go forward with that. We'll get the bids.
So.
I don't think we need to do any motions.
We don't need to do any.
I just wanna make sure everybody's on the same page.
And and I wanna, I wanna clarify, we, we did, so when we, when we approved the seventy-five thousand dollars of that, um, we had intended for staff to build the R F P, um, involve a bid on it. After some discussion here and concern potentially of, of what the damage and the complexities that come with potential um architecture and engineering related to a rough suffering. We thought it best to get a professional to assist in helping us develop that R F P. That document is in here.
Is that the one that's fifteen thousand?
Correct, correct. So I, I just want that to be known. If we, if we do move forward with that um, service, there leaves about sixty thousand dollars for a roof.
I, I, I guess, uh, okay, we're looking at PDF one oh one. Right, so I, I guess I'm a, the scope of the proposed roof replacement construction. Is that what they're using to get the fifteen thousand or is it just the engineering service scope?
I can let Brian talk about the proposal. Hey, Brian, are you with us?
Yes, uh, that would be for us to work with our structural and roof uh subconsultant to bo- both lay out a bid package, you know, the, the the regular, what I'll call regular village bid package with a set of specifications and design detailed drawings on how things are gonna be different for sure on the roof than they're currently are and get it to bid, open bids, present bids to the board and then monitor the construction as they're doing it. Uh, there are some, some areas that are a bit soft uh, from just walking on the roof and then from looking inside the roof, some of the water staining. Uh, we're just not sure what we're gonna see until you get the, the shingles off. So included in that fifteen thousand would be the construction administration to, to come out and, and make some engineering judgments on what we find once the shingles are off.
Alright, but I thought I read in your proposal, it's only one, one uh time. Is that not the case? I thought I read in here that that counts as one time coming out. That's included in here.
That'd be for, that'd be one site visit for existing conditions. We, I've got, I think, four site visits in, estimated.
Okay.
In the, that fifteen thousand, it is, as all of our stuff would be. This would be hourly and only needed as you, as you do it. Uh, Jerry may be able to, to take care of some of those. Uh, if we don't find anything up there, then it'd be zero, you know, but it, we just don't know until we get it. So that's why I wanted to give you a not to exceed estimate.
Okay. So now that would need a motion.
Would need a motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think we need a motion to do us a contract with Town and Country to do that work. That's not original. Judy?
So I'm just giving you the seventy-five that you approved. If this is fifteen on top of that seventy-five, or it's fifteen on top of that?
So we, we budgeted seventy-five thousand in twenty twenty. Uh, the fifteen thousand dollars will be off of that and then we will determine what the cost of replacement is and go from there.
Right, but I can assure you that we won't get a roof for sixty thousand. Lori?
I was wondering, how did we come up with seventy-five thousand? I mean, how did the library come up with seventy-five thousand for the roof?
Yeah, I thought they had someone come out.
Out there, quick, give a quick estimate.
So that, but I think where the concern comes in that we don't wanna just put new shingles on without fixing the actual problem. You know, I'm hoping it's just extending the downspouts instead of them emptying out right next to the crease they go to there. But anyways, so the seventy-five is just for that. That doesn't include probably if they have to replace boards and stuff like that. So that's what we did. So I, I'm guessing it's gonna be there and I'm thinking that it's gonna probably be more. But I, that's why with this, I think what they're doing is because they think there might be more that you wanna get someone up there instead of just a roofer to just redo the same thing and then we run into the same problem. Now, I don't know why you can't look at blueprints and figure that out, but uh, um, that's what this is. It's a more in-depth look to actually solving the problem if it's more than shingles and it has to be because our shingles are not that old. Sarah?
I'm just assuming we've already ruled out that there's any shots on which these?
Yeah. Right, yeah, we went that route and um we uh kinda checked for just uh some minor hail damage.
But I mean, from the flaws in the design, the original, it's supposed to be like a thirty year.
Well. Subject to that condition. I mean, they call it a thirty-year roof, but depending on what environment it's in. Um, so you're talking about like a warranty?
Well, I'm talking about, because this was based, this all happened so prematurely because of flaws in the original construction, right?
Well, that's what we're, that's what we're suspecting.
We just don't have proof right now. Lori?
And there's no liability with the person who built this building?
No.
That is.
We, we accepted.
Yeah, usually they don't go for more than a year to two years.
Yeah, usually, usually when they finish construction, there's a walk through. So it should be uh, again, I'm, I'm not, not here. I wasn't here, but usually there's a walk through and approval.
And how old is this building?
Fifteen, fifteen years old.
It just seems strange to me that, I mean, if the builder is still out there that they would not be freely coming and saying this was flawed. And now we're paying potentially an additional fifteen thousand dollars when it was a craftsmanship. We, you're not gonna know until a few years down the road. It's probably been leaking for longer.
Yeah, I, I, and, and the problem is right now, we don't know. So we're just speculating. So I think we have to wait and see what what the problem is. It could have been where the roof, people didn't put the roof on right.
But we have contacted the builder and it's definitely, no, we are not gonna help you out with this. It's not an assumption that it's not covered. I mean, commercial buildings might have more coverage than.
Yeah, but fifteen years is a long time.
Yeah, I, I believe, I, I believe Pam's face out to the builder.
I have Kevin and then Judy.
Yeah, this is one of those where you, I think we gotta hold our nose and, and, and take it, take our medicine because uh, nobody wants to pay this fifteen thousand, but you also wanna pro- protect this investment that we're in and that's now gonna be our new location for voting. Um, so, and it's probably worth, you know, double what it was worth fifteen years ago uh, to build it today anyways, would certainly be that. Um, so I, I'm fully supportive and uh make a motion that we hire Town and Country uh for their proposal provided in the board packet today.
Alright, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, any other discussion? Judy, I know you.
I was just gonna say, I think Pam, we, I thought we had the original people up there a couple times. So just to your credit, yeah, I do think we, I think they tried everything. So I support it all.
Alright, so I have a motion and a second to uh contract with Town and Country to do the evaluation and engineering service. evaluation and engineering service. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. All right, so that's taken care of. The fire department, that's out of our hands. I think what we'll go Jerry, why don't we go to your memo on because it most of these are all tied to yours right now and your plan. If I understand your plan is you're just adjusting your capital budget into different categories to meet the overall budget that was approved.
Yeah, that sums it up.
All right, so can I I just have a question for you? It seems like the main player in this is not going with the bucket truck. And instead of purchasing that, you would purchase a trailer and then rent a lift when needed and that amount would be placed into the operating budget. I guess I'm curious on how much were you looking to put into the operating budgets to cover that cost?
For twenty twenty one, I would be looking at four weekly rentals. Which the quotes I've got from the closest suppliers are nine hundred dollars per week for a full week's rental. So that'd be thirty six hundred dollars. I may trim that back a little bit once I see what the final count is on dead ash trees here, a little closer to fall. But it's going to be somewhere as three thousand to thirty six hundred.
Okay. So just for other members, I just did some prep thing. If we borrowed the thirty five hundred over a ten year at three percent, that would be four thousand, three and a half percent, forty one hundred. So it looks like that financially is even a good deal to at least try it if I'm understanding what Jerry's saying, right?
Yeah, there's some issues that have come about. I would not be comfortable making a purchase of any particular piece of equipment for aerial work, right? Now, there's some issues within the industry, primarily the safety aspect as to what's going to be required of owners for annual inspections, testing. I'm hoping in the next couple of years, they get that stuff all sorted out. I I wouldn't be comfortable buying something now that all of a sudden we find out that it costs us ten thousand dollars a year to have it safety inspected. It just doesn't make any sense to me. So for right now, I think the best bet is get a trailer that we can haul one on. Rent the various brands that are out there, figure out which one works the best for us. And then see about a purchase in a few years.
All right. And can that trailer be used for other village equipment? Would you have other uses?
Yes.
Okay.
The trailer we have now is just a eleven foot skid steer trailer. And it's GBW actually doesn't even accommodate the the skid steer that we currently have. For the last twenty seven years, whenever the village needed to haul something longer than that trailer or heavier, I would bring one from home. Let's use it. One of these days, I'm not going to be working there. You should probably own your own trailer at this point in time.
Well, I cer- certainly appreciate you working this through. Anybody else have questions for Jerry on on kind of his proposal? Because we will have to do a motion on that since he's adjusting everything.
Bill.
I just Jerry, I just appreciate all the effort you put into this and thought behind it and kind of foresight of looking down a couple of years and seriously, I do appreciate that very much. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Jerry, did you want to say anything else on this? On your.
I guess I'm not actually ready to make the purchase of the actual trailer. So if you want to just approve the concept, I'll bring you actual numbers for the purchase of the trailer in a month or six weeks, whenever I get them all together.
That's I'm I'm fine with that. All right, any other questions?
You want a motion?
I'll take a motion.
I'll make I'll make a motion that we approve Jerry's changes to capital projects as denoted in the in the packet.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the adjustments to the capital improvement plan laid out by Jerry Gray. Any other discussion?
Just could you please identify what specifically those are? I mean, we're talking about the equipment here.
Yeah, go to PDF ninety nine.
Yeah.
Well, it's it's a little bit more than just equipment. We're talking about infrastructure.
Okay, well, we didn't talk about the paving part of it. That's all I was.
Well, that's all been approved.
Okay.
What he's doing is that bid came in higher, so he's taken. So that's all part of the the motion.
Well, I want to make that clear that everybody knows we're voting on that. We didn't.
Yep.
Okay.
So the paving is included.
Yeah, we're basically the top, everything on the PDF ninety nine. Because like the infrastructure general would have been just a hundred thousand, you know. Go ahead, Lori.
So the paving is one bid and even higher than his.
I think he had three bids and that was the lowest of the three and they were all higher. Is that correct, Jerry?
No, I'm I'm looking for approval of the concept here tonight. I've got to get final numbers for the trailer and final numbers for the paving to bring back to you.
Oh, okay. I I thought the one that you had in the packet from Scott was it.
No, that's that's the lowest one that I have so far, but as you can see, that one's three months old. They will honor that, but I wanna I want to revisit it. I mean, three months is three months. Things change.
Yeah.
Or can you say like to exceed it?
I'm just wondering if it's too early to even make a motion or approve anything. That's what I think, yeah. I think it's just gonna have to come back when things are. I think if you just wanted the concept, I think we're okay with that.
So that's what I'm looking for.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I guess we'll just.
Let it fail.
Let it fail, yeah. All right, let's do a roll call vote. So everybody knows, everybody understand that this the motion we have really doesn't have any meat to it right now. So we want it to fail. Go ahead, what's roll call vote?
I'm thinking about how how it's gonna look like in the in the minutes if it fails.
Well, the motion was to go ahead and do what was recommended, but we're not ready. There's what we're recommending may not exist.
All right, trustee Pomakowski.
No.
Trustee Xander. Trustee Fensel.
No.
Trustee Brosius.
Nope.
Trustee Kellamover.
No.
Trustee Thucius.
No. No. All right, I I misunderstood, Jerry. Sorry about that. So I think the the general idea is we say go ahead for it. We like the idea. Come back when you have solid numbers.
Right, that's that's what I intended.
Okay, very good. All right. I don't. Is there something else that needs to happen?
Yeah, so in regards to the water system assessment and the wealth re test well cost.
Okay, yeah, okay.
We need to figure out where that money is coming from. It was approved, both of those items were approved at the last meeting or previous meeting.
Yep.
And it just was not settled at that time where the dollars would come from and we were going to hold it until we have a discussion on capital items.
This is for the thirty seven thousand? Or is this for a hundred and seven thousand?
No, this is for, so in my memo, this is for the eighty thousand and sixty thousand.
Each one on three.
Lots on page, in my memo is on page ninety seven. And then this this is part of material.
Okay, I've got you. So we're now down at the recommendations. And our is one, two and three all? Oh, no, we're just looking at three right now, right?
We're just looking at three or not.
Okay, so Bobby's on on, right?
Bobby is on.
Okay, the only part that the unspent bond proceeds, I'm okay with that that goes. What I don't understand is using borrowing the ninety thousand from the general fund with a payback when I have it where the water has a fund balance of two hundred and sixty three thousand, seven hundred and ninety one to my record. So I'm just wondering why we're not using the fund balance in the water account to cover the cost of the water capital outlet.
Yeah, now that was my input and and Bobby and Jerry can head in after that. My suggestion was to to take the loan out of capital improvement fund because those are geared towards capital projects. We have fund available there. And then it would be paid back when we when we go out to borrow or go out to get the loan for the wow. That way you're not tapping into operating dollars.
Okay, I that makes some sense, but here's where I'm having a big problem. We just raised water rates forty percent. Now we're gonna go, the water utility is going to go out and borrow to cover these costs. I I'm just having a hard time with that when we're sitting on it. And I know eventually, and if it's going to be paid back in twenty twenty two, why not just use it from the water utility? And then it can be put paid back in twenty twenty two when we do that. When we do the the borrowing.
Yeah, I just I don't I just don't know what this still needs to get paid out of the fund balance. So when we talk, Bobby, can you clarify that amount in the fund balance on the water side?
Yep, so in my memo, I saw it at the end of last year, we had two hundred and sixty four thousand. And through June thirtieth, we've used eighty, almost eighty two thousand of that. It is a little I'm gonna say, so the water revenues coming throughout the year, but we spend a lot of the money in the first half of the years that our debt payments are due. So you know, at June thirty, the cash position looks a little worse than what it potentially could be at the end of the year, so.
Yeah, because yeah, because in her memo, it shows the two hundred and sixty three in water utility. And they've used the eighty one thousand, you know. So there's still you know, a hundred and eighty thousand. I.
I don't have any qualms about taking that out of fund balance, you know, but the dollars are sitting there in the the capital improvement.
Well, but here's can I I'm gonna, again, I think we got to look forward. I agree there's funds in there. But I would prefer using those funds to cover some of the capital costs in the twenty twenty one budget. You know, to keep the costs down instead of losing that, because I can't touch the fund balance in water for other capital projects. I can take that capital funds and use it to buy the police car, buy the software and that kind of stuff, so we don't have to borrow. And we use the fund balance in the water utility to cover water utility costs, so we don't have to borrow on that. I just, to me, that makes more sense. That's such a restricted account. And we're becoming somewhat of our own bank, you know, I'm I'm concerned about all these loans that we're giving Peter to pay Paul, you know, so I I I put, and this is just my opinion, I'd rather take the money out of fund balance and water utility, cover these costs for water utility, the money that's left and capital put towards the capital projects in the twenty twenty one budget.
The only thing we would need to think about is I know some of our is that the loan requirements require us to have so much like revenue ratios or cash ratios. You know, I think if we spent all that money, we might fall below those requirements.
Well, I.
Check the audit and.
Yeah, but I I thought we were covered with the water system bond fund. Because aren't we putting in like fifty some thousand a year into that to cover that clean water loan?
Right, yeah, that's that's not what I'm talking. I think
Oh.
the water utility has to have such a certain percentage. Like a.
Well, I think we can certainly check into it. We certainly can break the law, but I I don't know. And I I'd like the the opinions of the other people on the board on what they think about the two options we're looking at.
I think we could always pay for it out of the water funds now and then if we need to borrow later to reimburse the water fund, like that could be an option. You know, if we needed to.
Okay, so I have Bill, Judy.
So if we if we borrowed the money from water fund, wouldn't that be a liability to the water fund and and that would still be used for our ratio or no?
No, they're borrowing from the general fund.
Well, I thought we were borrowing from water.
Water is borrowing from the general fund.
Oh, I thought I thought you said we were going to borrow from water, which makes sense because that's where the wells, that's where the.
Well, down the road, but right now what's being proposed is we have this ninety thousand that we need to come up with.
Right.
Bill's proposal is you take ninety thousand out of our general fund capital improvement fund to pay for it. I'm my plan is to take it out of the fund balance of the water utility to pay for. And the difference is that ninety that's going here, we can't use for other projects, but that water utility fund is only for water utility.
Right, so if we borrow that money from the water utility, it wouldn't that why, wouldn't that still be a liability that?
Water utility is not, the water utility is taken. They're the people getting the loan. Under bills.
You wouldn't, so if 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 the decision is to go and pay this, what I'm calling short term financing, because eventually that water fund will come in and and or the loan will come in and cover that. But if you're taking it out of water, you're basically paying that upfront. So you're paying the test ball upfront and you know, I guess it's up to for debate whether you pay yourself back for that or not. It's a lot clearer. Again, using using it, I understand, you know, kind of where you're coming from. The the question I would ask, you know, and I guess this would be question to Bobby and or Jerry is we want we want to double check on what kind of fund balance we we need to run
Yep.
in the water fund. And then making sure that there's enough. Yes, I'm all for just, you know, paying for it now. If we can.
Okay, Judy.
I was just gonna say, I can hear what you're trying to say, and I like that suggestion. If we can do it.
I was just gonna say, I can hear what you're trying to say, and I like that suggestion, if we can do it legally, if if she thinks that it's not gonna mess up anything.
I I guess I, I I have to believe when the PFC looked at at our rates, it increased them by forty percent. There was a built-in extra money there that we wouldn't have to come back next year again, so I gotta think at some point we're gonna start generating revenue, cuz I think the return, don't they look at four percent?
Yeah, they have a four-point-four percent.
Okay, four-point-four percent, we should be building into that account. All right, anybody else? Michael.
I'll just say that I agree with what you're proposing. Let's not try to do inter-fund loans. It just makes things complicated, in my opinion, when the fund, if it can support it, it should just pay for what it's requiring.
All right, so I guess why don't, um, is this something we can make a motion contingent on?
We'll just bring it back.
Bring it back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let let us take a look, closer look at what's needed for the ratio from fund balance and bring that back. Now we won't have exact numbers.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
Okay. Is there something else on this? This was, they, she needed some direction. Is that it for, I get, well, I guess, um, I think we have to do, I guess I want to give you guys general, so we know, I would prefer that we don't do a borrowing this year since we have capital funds in a fund balance to cover the capital costs for this year. We use those funds. It doesn't make any sense for me, to me, to go out and borrow when we already have money that we borrowed and we're paying interest on it. So for that concept, is everybody good with that, that we wouldn't have to do a borrowing then?
I agree with that.
Do you need any action for that? I don't think we do, cuz we're not going out to borrow, so. All right, Judy.
One quick question. Does elders keep track of like our rates, I, as far as the loans we have now, just cuz interest rates are so low right now, I don't know if we're in a great fashion.
They, they do, uh, so I believe annually, we take a look at, at seeing, um, if we're able to, um.
Yeah, I think we asked Bobby that. I think they do keep track of that. All right, uh, Bill or Bobby or Jerry, is there any other action that you need us to take related to these capital improvements or the funding?
I don't believe so.
I think we're good.
All right. So we'll go on to, uh, number eleven. Uh, this will be Bobby giving us a presentation on the second quarter financial analysis. It's all yours, Bobby.
All right, so if we take COVID out of the equation, um, the village is doing well for twenty-twenty. I think a lot of our expenditures are on track and there's no major issues. Um, the thing, obviously, COVID is affecting is, um, in the general fund, um, election expenses are up, and then the SRO revenues kinda we're not sure where that is, if we're gonna have to take a hit on that or what's going on there for sure. Okay, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Oh, I just was, that's all I had for general fund, really.
All right, does anybody, it's the memo, uh, that she sent us, it's on PDF one-oh-six. Does anybody have any questions for her on that at all? All right, is there, you wanna hit, uh, the water and sewer? Was that, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we just talked about libraries perfectly fine, um, parks and rec. You know, that'll be kind of a toss-up here the next couple of months. Mike thought he'd have a much better understanding what he was gonna be bringing in and where he'll be at for year-end in the next couple of months. Um, the service was good. Tid's fine. Water, we will be doing a budget amendment for that, um, in the next quarter for, cuz the twenty-twenty budget assumed no rate increases because we didn't know how much it would be or when it would take effect. So we can update that for the updated revenues we'll be getting. But expenditures for water, nothing out of the ordinary. And then sewer is doing what we thought it would do, where we're kind of operating in the red, so to speak. Um, which we knew what would happen for the next five years, where we're just kind of borrowing money from. You know, right now, it's kind of that support fund. It's kind of what's holding us up right now. Yeah, I guess nothing major, in my opinion, and my materiality threshold's a little higher than other people, so what I think is immaterial, other people might think is material. Is there anything anyone wants more information on or clarification?
Yep, are there any questions for Bobby? Does anybody have? All right, it looks good. I thank you, uh, for that update. We'll go on to the next one. I think you're part of that also. And that would be discussion and possible action on resolution ten dash twenty-twenty budget amendments for uh, twenty-twenty dash zero-one. And that's for people, that's page one-oh-eight.
Yep, so this is just our quarterly budget amendment. I don't think we did it in the first quarter because there wasn't really any major swings. Um, we did identify a handful of things here for second quarter. The first one there is the community development, and that's mostly fees relating to the new subdivisions. The expenses have been more than we projected, but then all all that gets reimbursed through the developer, so the revenue we increased also. And then Bill identified a bunch of items that all kind of net to zero, um, from the election budget and then his administration budget. Nothing too big a dollar amounts there, just kind of moving expense line items around. And we did have to take a little out of contingency, though, twenty-two-hundred. And then the third thing is the twenty-twenty budget. That was my error. I forgot to incorporate um, Chief Jansen's vacation payout, so we were gonna be over budget on that line item. And then our interest income for this year is doing well over budget, so I just kind of took that money to offset the vacation payout. And then, uh, the Tid had a, the tax refund settlement, we had to pay out there's funds that will generate this year to pay for that. And then we, we did do a little one for Mike, um, kind of a preliminary one, and then we will do another one at the end of next quarter. So he was kind of thinking that we would save enough in lifeguard wages and some other expenses to offset some of the decrease in revenue, so at this time, we're just doing a net effect of zero in that fund also. There any questions on that?
Does anybody have any questions on the budget amendment? I certainly appreciate you working this through, and I think this is, uh, a good, uh, new step of adding these budget amendments, so we're staying up to date on on how the budget's going, so I certainly appreciate all the work you've done on that. All right, so I think I have, uh, did I do a motion on this? No, okay, so uh, I'll need a motion in a second, uh, to approve resolution ten dash twenty-twenty budget amendment for twenty-twenty dash one.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution number ten dash twenty-twenty with amendment to the twenty-twenty budget.
And I will second that motion.
All right, let's do a roll call vote.
Uh, trustee Fensel.
Yes.
Trustee Xander.
Yeah.
Trustee Pomakowski.
Yes.
Trustee, uh, trustee Thucius.
Yes.
Trustee Kellam.
Yes.
Yes. I don't think it's necessary, that's just. All right, thank you very much. The motion carries. All right, so the last item on the, uh, on general business is the proposed twenty to twenty-one capital improvement plan. You have a big copy in front of you. We're not gonna discuss it tonight. This is you getting it, looking at it. I would ask if you have questions on any of these, go to the, uh, department head or Bill, but if you could do it by email, that would be great because that way, if they answer you and it's a question that they think all of us need, they can send the response to all of us. So there's not, you know, seven of us calling them and asking the same question, so take a look at this. Send it out, and then they can make a call of it. The answer should come back to, to all of us. And we really want to focus, uh, on twenty-twenty-one to to start with, and then obviously twenty-twenty-two and go out, but main focus will be obviously twenty-twenty-one, but it's good to know what's out there in five years.
I do, I do have the support documents for that, so if you, if you do want to see the support documents, send me an email. Well, you know, one caveat to your comment, Jay, um, is that if, if it's a large enough question, um, I'll hold it for the, the meeting, if you don't mind.
Oh, no, that's fine, that's fine. I'm just, if, you know, I have some on here that, you know, my example would be for the chief. Did he compare the cost, even though the hybrids are more costly than regular, what are the savings? So does it pay for itself? Those are, those are some of the things I think people might want to have as we bring in for discussion. All righty, so there's no action on that. We'll have that discussion at the August meeting. Are there any future, uh, agenda items people would like? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh. Sure.
Is it possible that some of the questions we asked will actually make changes to this before next week, or will it come as presented?
No, this is coming as presented. It'll be just like this. The only thing is, hopefully, wha- what I always have found is, you know, if I ask that question to the chief, there's no way he's gonna know that answer. He's gonna have to do a little research. It's not fair for him to, I'm not gonna get my answer, and so do we delay it till September? So I'm trying to get the, whatever you guys have, that takes some research.
I guess why I was asking, because then all those questions go for the meeting and, you know, this, that, that time, the amount of time that we're going to answer every one of the questions. I was just trying to make it more efficient. There was a way to change it before it came in. Those questions could get answered. Great, a new document here and maybe experience.
What I would suggest then, if there is a change like that.
Yeah.
The, the department head would say, just, you know, I would like to modify this because of the questions and the research to this. I don't have a problem with that, and that would speed it up. Yeah. And obviously, if the answer, if I get the answer and. Yeah, I would, yeah, yeah. All right, any other questions on that? All right, future, uh, agenda items. Does anybody have one they'd like, uh, throw out there? Bill.
Yeah, can we, uh, get on their, uh, on the agenda, the, what we talked about, animal waste pickup and fines?
Okay.
Cuz that was a different section within our ordinance.
Yep. Okay. Anything else? Lori?
Um, just actually, I just wanted to let people know that, um, so I just. So our neighbors had an issue with their water bill because it was so high, and she just wanted me to relate to, um, everybody that when she called down to the village, she was so appreciative of who she spoke to, she can't remember who it was, but they helped her out. She actually had a toilet that was continuously running, and the employee actually even called and followed up with her to make sure that she was able to find a plumber and get the issue resolved, so just, uh.
Very good, thank you.
Good comment that I wanted to say.
All right, anything else? Do I have a motion for adjournment? So I have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all否, same. All right, good job. Lot shorter than I thought.